This conference will now be recorded.
Call to order the Hasslet City Council meeting, December 13th, 2021, at 7:00 PM. There is a quorum present in the chambers. There's Mayor Pro Tim Morrow, Councilmember Nahera, and Councilmember Rob online. There is Councilmember Clark and Councilmember Ricketts. The two invocation and pledge allegiance. Yeah, you bow your head with me? Thank you, Lord. We praise your holy name, and we just, we thank you in the midst of this Thanksgiving season to rejoice over the many blessings that you've given us and rejoice your son's birth in the coming days. We ask that you be with us all, in Jesus' name, amen. And if you stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Items of community interest for A, the city offices and library are closed Friday, December 24th, Monday, December 27th, and for the Christmas holiday and Friday, December 31st, and New Year's Day holiday, January 1st. Carter, a blood care drive will be on Friday, December 17th, 2021, at the Hasslet Library from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Let's not forget our folks and in the northern states of us that had the tornadoes rip through it, causing all that damage. That's just unfortunate. Help them if you can. Foresee the first day to file for application for a place on the May 7th, 2022, general election ballot is Wednesday, January 19th, 2022. Councilmember or council play or place, Councilmember Place 1, Councilmember Place 3, and Councilmember Place 5 will be on the ballot. Council, do you have any on line or otherwise have anything all about community interest? Very good. Item five, November administrative reports. Is there any report that you'd like to pull and have any further explanation of?
I had a question about the court report. It looked different than they have in the past. Is that a new report that we're going to be getting? I noticed it said non-parking versus parking, and there wasn't speeding tickets pulled out. So this is a new report?
As I understand, they have some new software, so I don't, I can't answer your question explicitly. But I do, I have heard they have some new software, and it may be generating a new report style. I'll make a note of that, and we'll get you an answer, though.
I also had a question about the Tarrant County Sheriff's report. We used to get a weekly Hasslet Crime Watch. Is that something we could request again?
You can certainly request it. Excuse me, I'm writing. Any other items, Council? Very good. We'll move on to item six. Staff reports to update on action items, projects, and event recaps. 6A.
I think Katrina White's online to get that report. Are you there, Katrina?
If Katrina's not there, I know Mr. Rogers can give us some little details. Go for it, David.
Hi, I'm here in Council. Yeah, on Saturday, December 4th, we had our Christmas in the Park 2021, sponsored by our Parks and Recreation Board, ran from 3 to 7. We had a lot of entertainment this year from the Northwest ISD. We had choir from Wilson Middle School. We had the Wilson Middle School Band there. The Wilson Middle School Orchestra was there. We had a choir from Nance Elementary, another choir from Hasslet Elementary, and another choir from Thompson Elementary. So the Northwest ISD was well represented with music this year, but it was really good. It was a good side deal. We had some last nights, it was a snow globe that people could climb inside, get their pictures made. We had over 30 vendors this year at the event, so that was really good. But our best fun, you know, Santa came on the fire truck. That went really well. Everybody was excited. The countdown was great. Mayor did a good job counting down for us, and we turned the lights on, and everybody had a really good time with that. Santa and Miss Falls were very busy up until the very last minute. I mean, there was a good line all evening long for the wait to visit and talk about what the kids wanted for Christmas, and we had best guests. We had over 1,400 people attend this year's. So we felt really good with the weather turned out really nice for the event. So everything, our little ice slide we had brought in, that was really good. That worked out really well this year. So everybody that we've talked to so far had a really good time. The vendors all did really well. So they were very pleased and ready for coming back for next year.
Very good. I want to take a moment here. And I jumped over item number three, so I want to go back to item number three, citizen participation and comments. Is there anybody that, I do have three requests here. Two of them have to do with very specific items. One is general in nature. Would you like to speak now? Yeah, so please come on up then. Ms. Smith, we need to turn on the mic.
Start over. My name is Sandra Smith. My address is 300 Gammel Street here in Old Town. I live in and own my property, which is kind of a rare thing anymore here in Old Town. There's approximately 31 houses, minus a couple that have been dosed recently, and only about seven are actually a homestead, but who claim to live in their home, and I suspect a couple of those don't. So it's kind of deserted around here at night. I watched the P&amp;Z meeting in November, and there was zoning issues that came up. Lots of folks speaking for and against. And there were some folks there at that meeting that said there had never been any zoning changes forced on both. Well, if that's not a fact, I don't think that's a fact. I can't swear by it because I'm not a expert, Mr. Blank is. But in 2015, I requested a zoning verification letter, and that was prior to the current 2017 zoning ordinance. But in 2015, my property was zoned R7, and if I'm not mistaken, there's no longer an R7 in our zoning. So that was a forced zoning change on those of us who live here in Old Town. And it has not been a positive change, you know, to my quality of life. And those of you who read the sheriff's report pretty close will see my address come up quite a bit. So I'm just here tonight to say you need to carefully consider any zoning requests. Carefully consider them, either positive or negative. You know, you don't know which way that's going to go. You can just hope for the best. But my house being eliminated as R7 and being considered Old Town Transition has not been a positive experience for my quality of life.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Is there anybody else that would like to make any comments in general? Not the, but we've got specific items coming up. Very good. Okay, we'll go back to six, which is staff reports and updates. If we go to 6B, community park projects.
Just a quick update. Mike Anderson with Beltchiffen Associates and I had a meeting back almost a little over a month ago. We've been to the park board with the first round concept plan ideas. They gave a lot of good feedback on things that they thought they liked, things they didn't like, wanted some clarification on. So Beltchiffen Associates, they're working on the next concept plan, which will be going back to the park board in January at their meeting for them to give more feedback, and hopefully we're close this time, and we're hoping February or March, more likely March, I think, to have it ready far enough along with the concept plan, with the preliminary engineering costs, preliminary, you know, construction costs to bring forward and let y'all start seeing what the ideas are about getting those projects moving forward.
So to make clear, that's inclusive of the tennis courts?
Tennis courts, a trail.
Biggest one I get asked about.
Electric outlets around the inside of the community park area, around the basketball courts, additional lighting along the tap trail, and bench covers and such for Gammel Park over here. We're trying to put these all together kind of in a bigger project in hopes of getting, you know, better costs as far as contracting costs for doing the.
Uh, you want to take 6C?
Sure.
I want, I need to tell the council and maybe audience out there might appreciate that. Six we, 6C has always been titled, or at least this topic, is public works authorized equipment purchases. Then I asked one of our staff, I'm going, do we have a public works unauthorized equipment purchases list? I said, so let's just call it public works equipment purchases. So anyway.
Sure. Well, we have ordered up the mini excavator. The good part about the mini excavator, we had a $60,000 budget charge generously gave. The company that had the best price on one also was willing to take a lot of our old equipment that we had, small stuff and things, in as a trade and pay, pay, give us money for those. We traded in three old lawn mowers, an old 20, almost 30-year-old bat wing mower, our old little tiny skid steer that we've had for years, an old boom tractor that basically ran once in a while if you hadn't the time to spend on it.
Just, what do they do? Are they using it for a part? What do they do with that?
They have a wholesaler that buys them, and that's pretty much what they want. Like, they told us the boom tractor said all they wanted out of the thing was probably going to be the most. They didn't really care about anything else, but they would buy it, and so they bought a lot of that stuff that we were thinking we'd look into and weren't going to get much of anything. It was going to probably cost money to haul it off. And these guys paid us to come get it, so, and they've started slowly. Over time, they're coming and picking it up a little at a time. Now, of course, with everything else, the mini excavator, six, eight months at best to get something like that in, but at least it's on order, and we saved some money on it. So we were pretty pleased about that because they, with the stuff we traded in, they gave us $48,700. So we were just like super excited about that. We wouldn't believe that would have happened. And then we've been working on some others that we've got some bid prices working on right now for the UTV. We want to get, they're working on some prices for that from a couple of different dealers right now that we're hoping to have soon to be able to pick one and get that on order because everybody's telling us six months, seven months, eight months for pretty much anything right now.
What's a UTV?
One of those little utility gators, you know, mule, if you're talking Kubota, Polaris, there's whatever. We've got five different people we've contacted that are working on bids for us, so we're hoping to have good quotes on those soon.
Very good.
And we've been out looking at the trailers, got a couple of ideas, and they've got some people working on cost estimates for those. So hopefully soon we'll have some more things we're going to spend money on.
Good job.
A question.
Sure.
How's it coming with the sewer inspection truck?
That is at least a year away, fair minimum. So we've got, we've looked at two. We've got one more that we're going to have a little demo with, see how we like, and then pick the one and then place the order and then just wait. But they're all telling us at least one.
We'll flow into the spoils pile. I noticed that they have, they've used quite a bit.
Yes, we used a lot, probably a good third, I would say, of the pile on the parking lot there behind the fire station. We used that for our base material to raise all that, level it all, compact it all in. So we used a lot for that. They had one truck that hauled for two days to the other side, but then the truck broke down, and they haven't been back since. And he's trying to find another truck. Although we do have a possible something that we may be working on ourselves to use some up on a project helping with our EDCs possibly. But we've got some other things, so we may use up more of it ourselves.
Very good. Okay, 6E is the town hall meetings. This is just a brief of the town hall meeting, and first off, I have Ms. Patricia Hillborne would like to speak to 6C. Why don't you come on up?
Mayor, I prefer to wait till after you make your presentation because you might answer my questions, and then I won't have to ask.
If you would like to, I mean, is there anything specific you'd like to speak to the town hall meeting?
Oh, I'll let you know if you don't hit them. Can't seem to get this.
Okay. Well, what's on your screen is the presentation itself, and I'm not going to speak to each slide. I didn't speak to each slide in the town hall meeting. I don't know how many of the council had the opportunity to come to the town hall. Councilmember Rob. Nahera, Councilmember, I saw Rickett. Okay, great. So I don't need to tell you all particularly of the content, and I know many people did show for the town hall meeting. I would say what I would like to state is why did I call for the town hall meeting is that addressing thoroughfares, of course, this is our only north-south thoroughfare, and I had the opportunity to look at the design. Now, this design was the design released November 2020, so 13 months ago. And then I started speaking to businesses and resident. Oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me now? Is that better? Okay, anyway, this is, I had the opportunity to look at the text dot design in detail and spoke with staff on it, and then I spoke to businesses on it, and then I spoke to residents. And what I found going outside of, you know, outside of staff anyway, is that many people had heard of 156 and text dot, but as far as that went, they didn't know particularly what the content was, what the design was, and what the intended use of it was. So I felt even though text dot had a public hearing, what, maybe two, two and a half years ago on this item. So I felt very compelled, since this is our only north-south corridor through Hasslet, is to fulfill that one of the most important callings that we have in our service is engaging the public. Do they understand? Do they know what they have before them? So that's why I called the town hall meeting. In the town hall meeting, I had the full plans laid out. They, there's three map sections in that plan, and each map section was eight feet long. So you could see the full length of it. And then also, this particular slide was running at the same time. And there were handouts. So I'd like to furnish you the handout, and I have some for out there. So this, this is a copy of the slides that were rolling on the screen. In this, I did offer up an alternative to the text dot design, which was six lanes divided. Speed limit was 55 miles an hour, and the, in talking with staff, they were in meetings that the intended use, the reason it was that large and the speed was it intended use was to be a relief for I-35, and that was from text dot. So I didn't wanted to hear from the public, people that live here and people that don't live here but who frequent FM 156. So I think it did accomplish that. We had two town hall meetings. November the 1st, from 6:30 to 8:30 PM, and November the 6th, which is Saturday, it was from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and it was held with, at Heritage Baptist Church, of which I need to thank and want to thank publicly for their cooperation, as they always do for our community. They're a great, great asset to have in our city. Part of the, I'll say, education about is, I did several things I set out to do was to show the maps, add all the legends. It gave people ample time to study the map, study the legend, to see what it meant. The various symbols, and also with regard to what authority the municipality has with regard to state highways. FM 156, all these, you might hear ranch roads, farm market roads, or a state highway, they're all considered state highways. They're part of the state highway inventory. But the municipality has rights within certain bounds for those state highways running through their municipality. The at the same time, there was a group called the Hasslet Advocates that were at that town hall meeting, and on December the 7th, they came up to the office and presented me. Our Katrina White, our deputy city secretary, was in attendance to receive these petitions. There were two petitions, two petitions. One was for the FM 156 four-lane design in lieu of a six-lane design, and also a second petition calling for a 35 mile an hour speed limit. So what I want to do is pass out to the council and the remainder. Sir? Give me just a second. I'll read you the results of it. Now, you have your handout there. Of course, there's a cover letter that was given, and with regard to answering your question, Mr. Foltz, on the four-lane petition.
I'm sorry, can you, we didn't hear what the question was online. Could that be repeated?
There wasn't any question. Oh, oh, Mr. Foltz had asked, what were the results for people for it or against it? And that's, that's, that was Mr. Foltz's question, and the handout that I have given, and I'm sorry, Councilmember Clark and Ricketts, you haven't got this. Nonetheless, for the petition for a four-lane design, which was illustrated in the overhead, there were 674 signatures on that petition, and yes, they were all adults, every one of them, and of the 674, 358 were Hasslet residents. 316 were not Hasslet residents, but they frequented 156 through Hasslet. Also, the second petition was for a 35 mile an hour speed limit throughout Hasslet on 156. There were 501 on that petition, 291 were of Hasslet residents, and 210 were non-Hasslet residents but frequented 156. To garner that many signatures on any item is quite a feat. But nonetheless, I think that that speaks pretty well as to what the Hasslet citizens, as well as frequent flyers of 156 that are not residents would desire. But also, there would be other opportunities to speak on this, as I understand, and I'll confirm that Text Dot would intend to have another public hearing on FM 156. And if you have any specific questions, Ms. Hillborne, you said you might have a question?
I'm Tricia Hillborne, 2207 Virginia Lane. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I do have some questions that you didn't really touch on. Mayor Holsey, what contact have you had with Text Dot regarding the work that is proposed for FM 156?
What?
Contact?
What contact?
Have you approached Text Dot?
Yes, I have, but that's not this topic.
It is.
No, it isn't.
You're, you're saying that this is an issue that is part of the city's.
I have called Text Dot, and I have spoke with project manager.
By telephone?
Yes.
What is, what strategy are you proposing going forward for our city?
The strategy is to get Text Dot to have a public hearing.
But they're going to do that anyway?
I don't know that they are. They said they would, but they haven't yet. It hasn't been announced. As I was told several months ago, it would be either towards the end of December or the beginning of January. Well, here we are towards the end of December, and that has not been publicized. So I have got to follow up with Text Dot. So I have got to follow up with Technot on that.
Okay, so regarding, you know, after the public hearing, what will Hasslet's strategy be? Because they will, they will listen, if they do hold a public hearing, uh, then they will listen to any public comments, but then that doesn't necessarily mean that there's a working relationship.
Our, uh, strategy, I mean, what will happen is, uh, there will be eventually the city council will have a public hearing on this. On this FM one fifty-six design. We have got to authorize the design. That's one of the things of the municipality.
I'm sorry, you're, you're saying, uh, for a fact that Hasslet has to, the city of Hasslet has to approve?
To agree with it.
The Techstock?
They have to agree with the design.
By resolution, by?
It'd be by resolution.
Can you, can you provide for me, I'm not going to ask you to provide this at this moment, but can you provide for me, uh, where that information came from, where it says that we have to do that, it's in the state law or something? I appreciate that. You know how to contact me. You can send that.
Uh, you send me a note on that question, please, and I will do that.
You will respond?
I will respond to the best of my ability.
Okay.
So do you have any comments? Right now it's been questions.
I did. I said, I have, I have three more, just three more.
Excuse me, I would like to call to the end of it. And do you have any more, do you have any comments to speak for or in favor of, I guess, this town hall meeting that we had?
It's not a public hearing in which I must express an opinion about, and I, and I don't, I'm, uh, I, I don't disagree with it.
If you were frame your questions in an email or a letter, either one, and submit them to me, then we can move on.
I'd really prefer that you answer my questions now in this public forum.
Well, I appreciate that. And I admit most of that.
I will not continue to talk though, to ask questions. I'm confused why I'm not allowed to ask questions.
Well, I think, uh, you can ask questions and generally, and a lot of times, the council doesn't respond at all.
Well, you don't have to respond, but I'd like to ask my question.
I would like to, if you would.
Will your report be, uh, posted on the website, the presentation and also the information that you provided to the public? Will that be put on the website for so people that are not able to be here this evening that they can see it?
Uh, I will.
Okay.
I had not thought of that.
Um, you invited this group that helped, that set up a table at our city function. I hesitate to call it a meeting, but it was a function in, in, and they, uh, asked folks if they wanted to sign their petition. And tonight you have shown us the report that they presented to you.
I think, well, first off, the premise of your question is incorrect. I did not invite them. They asked if they could attend.
And you gave them permission then?
Yes, I did. As I would anybody else.
Uh, you, okay.
Nobody else asked me.
So what is the city's official connection with this political action group?
There is none.
So, okay, that answers that question.
There is no official connection.
Okay. And will the city attempt to verify the signatures on the petitions?
Absolutely. These were submitted to the city secretary's office and the city secretary will confirm all these counts.
That's great. Those were my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I will.
Was there any comment that you wanted to make? I mean, you didn't make any comment. You asked questions. And this was to make comments.
Well, I appreciate the information you're providing this evening.
Mr. Foltz, you'll need to come up to the podium and identify yourself. Yeah, you under, you got, you got plenty of that last time.
My name is Glenn Folt. Twelve oh four Highway one fifty-six Hasslet, Texas. I would like to know, and what factor does it help us to get people who do not pay taxes in our town, people who don't really associate in our town, to come in and do on the vote to help alter to a four lane or a six lane? What exactly gives people that right to come in there and do that?
It's a state highway. They drive it daily. Otherwise, they would have not been concerned about it.
Okay, and we, I, I like your four lane idea and the thirty-five miles an hour. But at this point right now, uh, what is going to change the traffic flow on that from being the trucks and all that? You're going to try to in, instill a mandate that trucks and large vehicles can't go up and down this highway that they've been doing for longer than we've been here?
Well, if you, uh, read the, uh, state law, it gives the municipality that authority.
You, you have the?
I have the statute, yeah. In fact, in your,
You have the power to change the state.
In your handout, if you have, do you have a copy of this handout that addresses that? It gives you the actual, uh, specific, uh, section number where you can find it in the state law.
All right, thank you.
Well, I have a question on that. So we can say no truck since we have supersede the, the state highway. Is, I, that would be great.
When, when another roadway project is completed and they, and the trucks, we can find another route that's equal to or better than this route that they have now. State law says we can designate this section as a no truck route.
A no truck will be allowed.
That's correct. And we have to enforce it. But no trucks would be allowed. In your handout to address that specific question, I believe it's, uh, I'll tell you what slide number it is. It's slide number ten. And the, uh, at the very top of that slide, it says, and this is the document that is given, it's called side guidelines and applications manuals. It's the Techstock February twenty twenty edition. And eleven is a continuation of that. But that gives the municipality the authority.
I have a question. So, um, I believe Techstock held a public hearing on this specific project in twenty nineteen. I don't remember exactly the dates. I just, I remember they held one. I attended it. Um, and so did I understand that correctly, that the, your strategy is to have them attend, or have them host another public hearing? Is that correct?
Say that again. I'm sorry. It's kind of echoing in here.
Okay, um, I'll try to speak a little bit louder, see if that helps. So Techstock held a public hearing on this specific project. I believe it was in twenty nineteen. I don't remember the exact date, but I remember because I attended it. Um, so did I understand that correctly, that your strategy is to get them to host another public hearing? When they already had a public hearing on this item, is that correct?
No, it's not my strategy. I just checked with Techstock and I asked them several months back if they were going to, um, have a public hearing on this. And they said, yes, the project manager did at that time. He said, now, this might have been in September, August timeframe, when I asked the question and they said, or this person said that they would hold another public hearing on FM one fifty-six at the end of December or the beginning of January. Well, we're here now and there's been no announcement of that. So I'm going to follow up and see if they intend to hold the public hearing.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Ritchie. But I, so you said you talked to them in September because at the November first meeting, you said you hadn't spoken to Techstock yet, when a citizen asked. So.
With, only with regard to, maybe it was, uh, July.
So not, not September. And is it, was it Mr. DeCall or is there a different project manager that you spoke with at Techstock?
Say that again.
Mr. DeCall, the one that, the gentleman that sent out all the, all the paperwork to the property owners that were adjacent to one fifty-six.
I didn't talk to the gentleman that was sending all the paperwork out to all the property owners. I don't know who that.
Cause he said in two thousand twenty-three would be the next.
I don't know who that was.
Public hearing once they have the environmental clearance. That's.
Is, this gentleman told me that they were going to have another public hearing. The end of December or the beginning of January. And I asked him, I said, when do you think that construction would might even, uh, start? And they said somewhere in twenty twenty-five.
Right.
Now, that was months ago.
All right, that, that's the same information I have too, but I just heard the next public hearing was twenty twenty-three, like two years or I guess a year from now, when they were going to have environmental clearance. So sooner would be better than later for them to have a public hearing for sure.
There's a lot. I think that, uh, all these Techstock projects are kind of moving targets. And, and especially the ones that have not started and have not been funded, uh, what I have. Now, not confirmed, well, that call, that same call that I, that they told me they'd have the public hearing. They said the project is not funded. And I've heard recently, third hand, that this project is not funded. And so I don't know what, you know, what that means, it not being funded and there is no public hearings. Maybe it's going to be put off, but I will be calling to find out very specifically about one fifty-six. Any other questions? So have you, uh, anybody here on the council heard anything from Techstock or aware of any information about one fifty-six? Do you know anything about one fifty-six?
Just what I just shared in open session that, yeah, that's it.
Councilmember Clark, Ricketts, anybody know anything about, uh, FM one fifty-six? Talking with Techstock, any communication with them?
Um, no, I don't. I just have one quick question, uh, for councilmember Ricketts and myself, since we're virtual. Um, will we receive those handouts by email?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Oh. Mr. Ritchie.
Richie, four oh four Blue Mountain Road, Hasslet, Texas. Uh, I just have a quick, um, couple of things. Uh, just curious if we know, uh, you know, the, the numbers on the, um, on the signatures is, uh, a factual number. Don't doubt it. I'm just curious, how many, you're saying there's three hundred and fifty-eight citizens, adult citizens in Hasslet that wrote on your petition? How many adult citizens do we have in the city of Hasslet? I mean, what is the percentage of Hasslet is three fifty-eight? I have no idea.
The city secretary will verify that.
Okay.
Well, I can answer. We have, we have eighteen hundred registered voters, so that's, I don't know if those are adult, I mean, they have to be eighteen and older to be registered to vote. So eighteen hundred and three registered voters.
Well, I'm just trying to get a concept of how big that number is in context of Hasslet, not context of the whole world. But, uh, okay, and, um, the other thing is, 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 I don't remember this exactly how this worked, but in my recall of how the contract with the, um, sheriff's department works is that they do not enforce any ordinances of the city of Hasslet. They only enforce, um, state ordinances and state and county ordinances. So is that not a true statement? I mean, do they force our ordinances? If we had an ordinance that said no trucks with the current enforcement that we have, um, in the city, could we enforce it?
That answer is yes.
Okay.
I have spoken, uh, several times with Tarrant County Sheriff's Department very recently and over the past many months since I've been mayor. And the reason that, such as Blue Mountain Road, you know, trucks coming down Blue Mountain Road, why they, they're aware of it. They know it happens. And I've asked very, why aren't you pulling them over? Well, the answer is, we have nowhere to pull them over. There's no shoulder.
Right.
And much of one fifty-six is that way now. There's no shoulder.
Yes.
And Schoolhouse Road, there's no shoulder. So.
I'm just looking, I'm looking at your drawing up there. I don't see a shoulder to pull over a truck over there either, other than, other than a traffic lane.
Well, you have two lanes each way. You can pull them over in the far right-hand lane.
Yeah.
And traffic can still go by, Mr. Ritchie.
That creates, to me, that creates the same road we have today, a single lane, because you've got all the traffic.
Well, for fifteen minutes, yeah, you would have what you got, one lane.
Anyway. I, I'm not a big, I, I don't really have a dog in this fight. I just wanted, I just want the best thing for the city. You know, what comes out of this is scientific and that is based on, on, you know, scientific data from fact, from us and from Techstock. And it gets merged into what's the best thing for the city.
Well, what we know about, uh, traffic analysis is, uh, who's science you're using and what the priorities are. We do know that the drives, uh, traffic analysis. Um, I'll tell you one thing is, uh, that one fifty-six, the speed of it right now is a huge deterrent to our internal commerce. People get home, they don't want to venture out again and mess with one fifty-six. And they pretty much, uh, they don't, uh, so there's no intercity, um, um, traveling to either the coffee shops or the pizza shops or the hamburger places. Some do, but many don't. And I've talked to a lot of people. I make, my, I make it a point to talk to as many people as I can about that and their habits and what they do when they get home. Do they go out again? But anyway, uh, commerce, uh, feeling non-threatening when you get on the roadway is a very threatening thing to get on one fifty-six now. I know that if you've got youngsters, uh, are out driving right now, I found myself, I'd wait at the end of the driveway to make sure they got on there safely. So Hasslet deserves a non-aggressive roadway right through the center of its town. And it shouldn't be intended to be used as a relief for I-35. They have the opportunity now to do a proper job, Techstock does, with I-35 and address the problem. They know the problems out here. So I hope they do a good job in, in addressing that in their design and construction. And that was pretty much the whole intent about the town hall meeting, to get people's opinions and their viewpoints. And, uh, yes, but not at my invitation. The Hasslet advocates were there. They asked if they could be. If anybody else asked me to be there, I would have given my blessing. No one did. So, uh, that's where that came from. Can I answer any other questions on the town hall meeting? If, uh, there are no other questions, we'll go on to item seven. All right, let's go on to item seven. Uh, consent agenda. Uh, council, we have, uh, the regular council meeting minutes for November the eighth. The, uh, we have the twenty twenty council meeting calendar and the twenty twenty-two, excuse me, twenty-two eighty-two council meeting calendar and the twenty twenty-two office holidays, uh, closer schedule. Any questions on that? If not, I would entertain a motion, or we can address each one individually.
I would like to pull seven B just because the calendar has the change that we're going to discuss in eight E. So I don't know if we should pull that or until after we discuss?
Eight B is for this, I mean, um, um, well, sure, that's a good idea. Let's do that. Let's pull item seven B is the twenty twenty-two council meeting calendar. We can take it up at the time when we address the other item.
And I make a motion to approve the consent agenda with seven B removed as presented.
Motion's made to approve the consent agenda as is, uh, with removing seven B. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a second. Uh, roll call vote. Mayor Proton Morrow.
Aye.
Councilmember Rickett, or excuse me, Naher.
Aye.
Councilmember Rob.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Ricketts.
Aye.
Motion approved. Eight B, public hearings, ordinances and resolutions and action items. Discuss and consider an act regarding a variance request for the placement of a residential swimming pool located at twenty-two nineteen White Lane. Mr. Thetford.
Thank you, sir. That was eight A, correct?
Eight A, yes.
I think you said eight B. Sorry about that. Mayor Council, thank you. Essentially, what you have before you tonight is a request for a variance, uh, for a placement of a swimming pool. Uh, we received a request, uh, from the pool company for twenty-two nineteen White Lane, uh, to place the pool. Uh, I think you have a, uh, there you go. uh, to place the pool. Uh, I think you have a, there you go. The diagram there, it shows that the pool is essentially located primarily on the side kind of the rear of the residence. Our ordinance does not allow any pools to be um, anywhere other than the behind the resident. After looking at the plan, we did deny the permit. The homeowner did request for a variance. And that is what we are hearing tonight is a requirement of variance to place a pool in the location on the plan. Though because there's not enough room behind the residence between the the house and the fence or the property line to place their pool. There is, there's a section in the, in the ordinance that does allow a variance to be requested and it has to be heard and approved by a city council. So here we are.
Council, it doesn't look like they have much choice. How long is that driveway?
I think it's almost seven hundred feet long.
Who is going to see it? Nobody.
And it's, it's behind the, the front building line, so which is a criteria for other things like
Sure.
uh, outbuilding stuff. So I don't see a problem with granting this very.
Would you like to make a motion, please?
Sure, I'll make. I make a mo, I make a motion that we, the city council approved the variance as requested.
Motion is made to approve the variance. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There is a second. I have a roll call vote. Any other first discussion on this item?
I had more discussion if possible, Mayor Halsey.
We have two. First, uh, Councilmember Ricketts.
Um, I guess my question is, is in a lot of other communities, is, um, not only it's behind the house, but they also like to have it fenced in for safety reasons. Um, again, I'm building a pool. I want everyone to have a pool. I, you know, everyone deserves to have fun and that, so, but I just want to make sure, is there any safety reasons? Again, that's an awful long ways back to their property, but.
Councilmember Ricketts, uh, this is about the placement of the pool. Our ordinances and the building codes do require fencing. You want to address that, Mr. Thetford?
I did speak with the homeowner and he said that they're, they are planning a privacy fence around the pool. There will be safety involved.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nahera.
I had the same questions and also will, would that affect the neighbor behind him in any way? Water flowing over there, the backflow of the pool or anything like that?
I thought I'm aware of, I think they still have forty something, maybe thirty five feet between the, the pool and that property line. Uh, they do have enough area there to mitigate any type of runoff.
Is there any requirement for the fence to be built first or, or, you know?
Before water is in the pool.
Okay. Okay.
Any other questions, council? Uh, call for the vote. Mayor Pro Tim Morrow.
Aye.
Councilmember Nahera.
Aye.
Councilmember Rob.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Ricketts.
Aye.
Motion is approved, five zero.
Thank you, Mayor Council, first time.
Eight B, discuss, consider and act regarding the community facilities agreement between the city of Hasslet and TM Watercrest LLC for the Watercrest Edition Phase Two. Mr. Anderson.
Yes, sir. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good evening, Mayor Council. Um, what you have before you this evening is the um, community facilities agreement for Phase Two of the Watercrest Edition. Um, this is the remaining phase of the subdivision located off of Blue Mountain Road. It contains approximately a hundred and thirty four single-family residential units. Um, we approved the construction plans for the addition back in October. Uh, final plat was approved by council in November, and this is the final item required under your ordinance to allow that this project to go to construction. And this covers the inspection, installation and conveyance of all the public facilities uh, required to support the addition. Um, we did modify the agreement to reflect, um, all the onsite facilities, uh, going to be conveyed to the city upon completion and acceptance of the project. Um, this facilities agreement was, um, approved by the city attorney and is, uh, been approved by the developers side as well, so um, we believe that this document is, is ready for execution. And, um, if anyone has any questions, I'll be happy to entertain those at this time.
Council, any questions on the CFA? Um. Mr. Anderson, aside from my city attorney, uh, we've reviewed it internally. And, uh, it meets all our requirements.
Yes, sir, that's correct. This is your, um, standard CFA form that, you know, has to get modified slightly for each project. They're each kind of unique, but, um, this one reflects, um, the construction of, of solely onsite facilities and has been modified to reflect such. It's ready to go.
Um, council, I'd recommend approval of it. Uh, is there any questions on the CFA? If not, if we could have a motion.
Mayor Halsey.
Yes.
I make a motion to approve the community facilities agreement between the city of Hasslet and TM Watercrest LLC as presented.
Motion is made to approve the community facilities agreement between the city of Hasslet and TM Watercrest as admitted. Is there a second?
I'll second.
That was stereo. You're at the same time. All right. Who? Councilmember Rob seconds. All right, any further discussion on this item? Okay, I'll have a roll call vote, please. Mayor Pro Tim Morrow.
Aye.
Councilmember Nahera.
Aye.
Councilmember Rob.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Ricketts.
Aye.
Passes five zero. Thank you, council. Eight C, hold a public hearing, discuss, consider an act regarding approving an ordinance amending the comprehensive zoning ordinance of the city of Hasslet, Texas, Section four point two five H entitled Additional Use Standards for Commercial Uses Relating to the Regulation of Gas Cells Pumps. Eight, um, we have public hearing. Now, I want to make it clear. The source and the author of this is Mayor Gary Halsey. I had this put on here. I sent it to PNC and needed to be addressed for various different reasons, but so there's no question as to the ownership of it. I own this item. So this making, uh, um, a full disclosure uh, presentation, Mr. Morris Swanky.
Yeah, Mayor Halsey and members of the council, this is a ordinance that would change the distance from canopies and gas pumps to residential units to six hundred feet. That's what was presented originally. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended that be four hundred and fifty feet. But when you look at the overall, um, you know, setbacks from this, six hundred feet appears to be reasonable. Of course, this is a, this is a council decision uh, to make and, um, you know, along one fifty six where people would like to put a lot of commercial and, and gas pumps, there's a there's a need to actually control those types of, of uses. And this would dissuade a lot of, uh, gas station type facilities that, you know, coming in on general commercial type property.
I would like to add to that since I'm the uh, owner of it, of this recommendation anyway, is that, you know, as Hasslet Parkway comes through there, we're going to have a lot of development. This would not hinder development like, you know, cell pump, convenience stores, or anything out along that new corridor that's being built right now. This is more addressing, uh, very specifically, you know, the one fifty six corridor and in our residential areas. And, you know, why did I put this on here? You know, some of these things, I look at it and I go, would I want a gas station and a convenience store next to me? Even a lot away. Current ordinance is, they got to be one lot separation. You know, that could be fifty feet wide, it could be five hundred feet wide depending on that lot. But it's just one lot separation. To do a, uh, and my answer to that is no, I don't want to live next to a gas station. And no one else does either. Uh, unless you show a hand, somebody wants to live next to a gas station. I didn't think so. So that's why I put it on here. There is, there needs to be active control. The most effective active control is distance. And that's the only thing. I like gas stations. I need them. But I don't want one next to me and we can afford to do this and not limit. We're still not limiting gas stations in Hasslet. It's just where they go. And there's no opportunity to go next to a residence. That's why the six hundred feet was chosen. Is there any questions on that? Oh, excuse me, we're in still the staff presentation mode. Uh, anything you want to add to this force presentation? I needed to say that to, as far as the presentation, where and why?
Well, that's, that's pretty good, uh, representation why this ordinance is, is, is needed. But, you know, if you have a gas transmission line, you know, going through your city, let alone gas pumps, the gas companies consider there's a five hundred foot kill zone along a lot of facilities. And so six hundred foot makes a lot of sense. If there's a major explosion or something from a gas tank, you want to make sure your residents are protected.
Very good. Um. Any questions for the staff, council? If not, we'll go into the public hearing.
Just. I do have one quick, one quick question for the staff.
Yes, Councilman Ricketts, go ahead.
Um, is there any more background as to why the planning and zoning reduced it to four fifty versus the recommended of the six hundred?
Well, there was a lot of discussion. The first motion, which failed, but actually they wanted to reduce it to two hundred. And, uh, then after further discussion, they said, let's go to four fifty, let's but that's, that was, there, there was no scientific or it was sort of an arbitrary decision.
I, I just didn't know. You just mentioned something about the five hundred foot kill zone too. If we go to six hundred, you're going to have a hundred feet within that. I didn't know if there's any other talk about that at all.
No, and, you know, it's just a protection measure.
I will tell you what I did do, uh, with regard to answer your question, Councilman Ricketts. Cause I suggested the six hundred feet as well. I suggested putting this on the, um, on PNC's, uh, agenda and I put in the six hundred feet. Why did I pick then? Put in six hundred feet? I went to several different places in the city on Google's maps and there's a measurement tool and it happens to be very accurate. Um, and I looked at, uh, certain corners. I'll tell you what, Blue Mountain Road and one fifty six is one of them here recently and it was denied. Uh, in fact, they withdrew. They knew it was going to get denied at the council. It got denied in PNC. Uh, was putting a similar facility on the corner of Blue Mountain Road and one fifty six. No one wants it on there. No one that lives here anyway wants it there. And it's not a good place for different reasons. Not a good place for Hasslet, Texas for different reasons. So I looked at that and I go, what distance would I need here? To just disallow this and not have to have a hearing every time, it's in the ordinance. Six hundred feet was a key number on that particular lot going through a residence from that point. So that's why I chose six hundred feet. And I checked a couple of lots here in the, uh, near the Hasslet Park area on the front of the road. Uh, we've had some calls on that and there's not a need nor desire by residents to have another gas station out there in six hundred feet. Address that matter as well. So that's how, um, um, six hundred feet originally came. And Mr. Swanky then told me about the, uh, the kill zone for gasoline explosions being five hundred feet, so.
Yeah, I was involved in some, um, uh, testimony and listening to, uh, experts in the field and this is on, uh, gas lines and in gasoline type of facilities. And that was their standard verb verbiage was there was a five hundred foot kill zone. And this is something that, uh, and people don't realize that, you know, it, it's a big, fairly flammable, uh, situation. You don't want those things to ever, you know, happen, but they can and they occasionally do. And so it's just a maximum protection.
But to answer Councilman Ricketts' question. Why did they go four fifty? Because I failed to tell them all that information. I failed to tell PNC what I just told you, the council, how I derived six hundred feet. And also we, I don't know if the kill zone was mentioned, but it was not mentioned. So they didn't have that explanation that you have. That's why they chose four hundred and fifty. They had no basis to choose four hundred. And they were probably assuming I didn't, we didn't have any basis to support this six hundred, but we do and there was a reason why. And I knew coming into this meeting, I need to express the reason why. Uh, it was one, I got to put the ordinance on there to begin with, how I derived six hundred feet. And also about the, uh, kill zone. Does that, hopefully that addresses your, your question, Councilman Ricketts.
It, it, it does. I, I guess I'm just real concerned if we go the six hundred feet and there's a five hundred foot kill zone and that's someone builds something within that hundred feet, um, residency next to it and something does happen, like Mr. Swanky says, we don't want anything to happen, but something does happen, you're within that kill zone. So to me, I'm more leaning towards the four fifty or even if we actually altered it to the five hundred. Um, based upon what it is saying versus the six hundred, so, um.
Excuse me, if the kill zone is five hundred, you're saying it would be good to go four fifty?
If you, if it was six hundred, you're one hundred feet within that kill zone.
No, you're one hundred feet out of the kill zone.
Okay, maybe I'm, maybe I'm thinking it backwards then, okay.
You are. Um, and, and it happens to me too. But if you're at six hundred, you're out of the kill zone by a hundred feet.
By the hundred feet, okay.
If you're four fifty, you're within the kill zone by fifty feet.
By fifty feet. I was looking at it backwards. I apologize.
I have a question. Is there not a state mandate that tells you this five hundred feet the kill zone? I mean, obviously it, it's a area of concern. You would think there would be a state law or some kind of ordinance that states that.
There, there is not any, any laws, you know, there's, there's gas stations everywhere and some in heavily populated areas. And, uh, they're, they've never done anything with that. But still accidents do happen.
It, it's a, there is no state law on it, um, not that I'm aware of, um, but it still is something that a city council has full right and authority to consider.
That was my question, um, was that, that same question of state law, but also what do other cities do, like Justin Keller's, South Lake? Do they have an ordinance that says adjacent like ours currently is, or is there's six hundred, five hundred? Do we know any of the, the data of other surrounding cities?
I do not.
I didn't check any other city, uh, you know, some member or Mayor Pro Tim Morrow. Uh, I was looking at what works for Hasslet, Texas.
I would think that they, they'd have the same concerns with the kill zone in the residential as we would have. So I just didn't know if there was a like, not a standard, like a state law, but something that was universally adopted in our DFW area.
I think the probability of the kill zone, correct me, Morris, would be more becoming out of the petroleum industry. Um, their, uh, design and would have to do with the explosion of a gasoline tank.
Yep.
Is, that would be, yeah. Now, it's, uh, you know, when a gasoline pump, yeah, they do explode and they catch on fire and it's quite a spectacular. quite a spectacular sight from what I've seen on the news before, but uh, I don't know that it kills everything in five hundred feet. So this is probably because gasoline with, you know, vapor and you ignite that vapor is very powerful, very powerful. And, uh, that's, that is probably the kill zone they're expressing, not particularly a gasoline pump. Um, I, uh, anyway, any other discussion? Councilmember Rob?
Um, my only concern is, uh, what would this, uh, do to, uh, Kevin DeSantis' existing gas station?
No effect.
Would that be, would it be non-conforming?
No, no, it, uh, that, that does not change any, any effect on Kevin DeSantis.
So he's farther away than six hundred?
Uh,
I'll, I'll address that. No, he's, he's within six hundred feet of, of residences, but he would be considered a legal non-conforming use. And it would not affect his business.
Well, until Tex dot reconfigures FM one fifty-six and now he has to move his pumps or gas tanks. So he would be non-conforming at that time and couldn't, I don't believe, couldn't um, relocate them unless he figured out a way to get six hundred feet from the, that, uh, house and has the park.
Over then existing situation like that. And if, I'm gonna say, if Tex dot has him move his pumps, then this same council can give him a variance. Cause he's not building a new facility. He's being forced to replace his pumps. Um, and/or canopy. And probably, uh, I don't know that he'd have to move either one of them. Where's he gonna move them to? Closer to his building? Yeah. This, this council would have, uh, we could make a note of that, you know, this council has full authority to grant him a variance.
Yeah, that would be a, a, a classic use of a variance is when it's a non-self-imposed hardship that's placed on a, a property owner. And if, and one of them is when Tex dot comes along and whacks off the front of your property, then that's, you didn't do it yourself. It's been imposed on you. And so that would be grounds for some sort of variance to alleviate the problem for him.
Any other discussion? Is there a motion? Oh, I'm sorry. Public hearing. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. Okay, item number two, I'd like to open up the public hearing on, um, this item regarding gasoline sales pumps. Is anyone like to speak to item HC? And I do believe I have a request here. I do. Ms. Patricia Hillborne, HC, would you come up and address the council, please?
Thank you, Mayor Council. So, um, we lost this battle with gas wells. Do you remember that? Uh, where another state authority finally came in and told us we couldn't do this. But I do agree with you really, let's say ninety-five percent, that if this discussion had been given to the, to the P and Z, they may have voted differently. Um, I attended virtually and the major discussion was that this number six hundred seemed to be arbitrary. And no one, including
Right.
the staff or the executive officer responded to that. And so they did talk about two hundred because if it's just an arbitrary number, then, uh, our gas, uh, wells have two hundred feet. So why not? Or it might be four hundred. I, I'm, I'm speaking there. Why not match it to that? And then someone said, you know, well then how about four hundred and fifty? And that felt like a compromise because there was nothing telling them that there was any reason not to. Now, I, I think that we have a similar problem with trains going into our city and, uh, quote, kill zones, uh, that we don't know what they're carrying, what could happen when they come through our city. And we can't, obviously we can't prepare for every situation. So I'm not speaking in favor or against this because honestly, I think, uh, the market will tell us in the future what the city will do on one fifty-six. And we can put, we can put things in place now that we hope will guide the future. But as we have discovered, um, the future is the future. So, um, I, I do agree though that, um, this, the more information that the city can provide its boards and the, and its citizens, the better response you'll get and the more intelligent and thoughtful response you'll get. You won't just have people arguing with you. Um, I don't think the ver, the words, this is a reasonable distance or we need to control or do it. But some other information that you provide could. So, good luck with that.
Thank you. Um, is there anyone else that'd like to speak to this item? Mr. Foltz, please.
My name's Glenn Foltz. Go for highway one fifty-six. Yep. My understanding of being in welding and oil industry for so many years, watching things blow up, do stuff like that, that most things that blow up, if they're on top of the ground with a very highly evolvable type fluid like gasoline, it's going to spread. But a tank being in the ground isn't gonna cause an outward spread. It's gonna go upward. And all gas pumps have kill switches on them and have cutoff valves. So when they get hit by a car or some crackhead idiot throws a match at the pump trying to blow stuff up, it shuts it off. It knocks it down. So wiping out a whole bunch of area to stop an explosion to me does not seem very relevant at all in stopping gas stations, except you do not yourself want a gas station next to your house, which is understandable. I didn't want a baseball park behind my house, but I got one. But my also reality is here, if I'm not mistaken by understanding the rules of Hasslet, that when we build a commercial facility, it must have a masonry wall around. If I'm, if I'm not wrong. That's what I remember the rule was for a long time. So if you build a gas station, wipes out a two hundred foot lot area, you build a six foot center block wall around in this area. When a gas pump does get knocked over, which it will, the hose gets yanked out of it, it will. What type of damage will it do to your property? That would be my, and I, like I said, I got a four-year degree in metallurgy on gases and welding and stuff. I did it a lot of years and I've seen a lot of it. And it just, I don't really see the relevancy of that. Or the gas station that has propane tanks on top of the ground. There you go. There's your problem.
Thank you, Mr. Foltz. Mr. Ritchie?
I'm sorry, we can't hear. Thank you.
Pat Ritchie, for Blue Mountain Road. I was taking the zoning map. And to me, this is a zoning issue. And we're trying to adjust the standard, the additional standards to the commercial uses. Um, all that property is zoned on our zoning map, R one and R two. Can we put a gas station in R one and R two? Can a guy walk in here right now and say, here, I want to build a gas station over here on this R one property? It stopped automatically. He can't do that in this city, can he? I don't think so. So why are we adding? I mean, if this helps, I don't have a problem with it. There's just more stuff, okay? We've got land use. We've got zoning to control growth in what we want. All right? So I don't see a problem on this particular area. Now, there are some places over there in that red, which is general commercial. And that may allow a gas station. I don't know, you know, if it does, then maybe this will apply to that. But I'll see how this applies to anything on Blue Mountain Road, you know? Because it's all, both sides of the road is the residential zone in the city. Am I wrong? I mean, I'm wrong. Thank you.
Does anyone else that would like to speak to this item? Uh, I don't see anybody online that would like to speak. Mr. Harvey, do you have anybody? Okay, very good. Then I'll close the public hearing. Bill, it's through item three, discussion, council. Do you have any discussion on this? Any questions you want to ask, um, staff? Or myself? If not, I'll go ahead and call for the vote. Now, realize in your vote, you can specify a different distance if you want to, or, or I say a vote. Yeah, I need a, I need, I need a motion. First, I need a motion. Is there a motion? Um, and you can, you can train that motion however you like.
I'm just thinking of the, the P and Z's four fifty, but without all the information and then the five hundred foot kill zone. So I, I mean, I don't know, I feel comfortable with five or six. I don't know how everybody else feels about that.
You would what?
I was telling them I feel comfortable with five or six. So I don't know, five hundred or six hundred. But I'm not sure. I'd like to hear what everybody else kind of thinks about that.
All right. So a discussion item of five hundred or six hundred feet? So we got a discussion here. Uh, what's your opinions about five hundred feet versus six hundred feet? Council, I need, we need to hear from you as individuals.
I, I think five hundred feet is reasonable. Six hundred feet is what, two hundred and fifty yards? So five hundred feet and it's within the kill zone that you're talking about. There's no state regulation. There's no precedent for us to go by. You know, you're talking about four fifty versus five hundred feet. That's fifty extra feet. So I, I believe five hundred feet would be reasonable.
I agree with, I agree with Hector's, uh, reasoning. I like five hundred. Cause we got, we got a hard, uh, a hard safety concern for five hundred. So it's not arbitrary.
Uh, Councilmember Ford?
I agree. I'm comfortable with five hundred feet.
Councilmember Ricketts?
I agree with the five hundred feet.
I have a quick question.
Yes.
Um, so do we need to specify in our motion? Um, because the ordinance that is posted in our agenda states, I believe it states six hundred feet. So does the motion specifically need to state amending that ordinance attached to say five hundred feet?
Yeah, you approve the ordinance, amending the six hundred to five hundred feet.
Okay, I will go ahead and make a motion then that I move that we, um, approve this ordinance. Um, let's see. Um, approve the ordinance, amending the comprehensive zoning ordinance uh, for the city of Hasslet, Texas, section four point two point five H entitled additionally, additionally standards for commercial uses relating to the regulation of gasoline sales pump, um, with the attached ordinance, um, updated to state five hundred feet.
Okay, now a motion is made to approve the ordinance with, uh, changing six hundred to five hundred feet. It would read five hundred feet. Is there a second?
I'll second. It's Councilmember Ricketts.
That was you seconding? There was a second. Okay. Any further discussion on this item? A roll call vote, please. Mayor Pro Tim Marl.
Aye.
Councilmember Nahera.
Aye.
Councilmember Rob.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Ricketts.
Aye.
Motion passes five zero. Thank you, council. Item eight D, hold a public hearing, discuss, consider and act regarding approving an ordinance, changing the zoning classification, approximate thirteen point four acre parcel of property known as twelve oh four FM one fifty-six south from general commercial to R two residential suburban density. Uh, staff presentation, and I'm gonna lead the presentation off again. Mayor Gary Halsey owns this one. It was Mayor Gary Halsey that put that on there. Why did he do that? I'm looking at the city as a whole. And I see this area along one fifty-six. I love you and your mom and your dad, Glenn. You know that. We've been, and there's nothing about any of that. So please understand. So I'm looking at the zoning itself. So I see all this residential. And then there's a new residential, um, subdivision between, um, this item, the property, and then on the other side of that property is a church. And I'm going general commercial and I'm looking at general, I'm looking at all that can go into general commercial and you have no ability to say no to. That wouldn't be particularly conducive to next to a house or a church. And I'm going, this general commercial zoning is incompatible for this area. This part where it is, how it developed out, it's not compatible. That's why I put it on there. I knew, I knew for a fact it wouldn't be received well at all. I know that. But it, uh, I did it for other reasons. So I understand that. I'm just here to tell you, full disclosure, I own this one as well. But that's why I did it. So, uh, please continue. It's gone before the P and C. Please continue, uh, Mr. Swanky.
Mayor Halseys and members of the, of the council, this is a request that was presented by the city, initiated by the city for thirteen point four acres to change the zoning from GC, uh, general commercial to R two, our residential. And, uh, right up front, I'll just let you know that the, uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, recommended the denial of, of this case. But, uh, in fairness to the mayor, when you see something that's an anomaly in a residential, almost a exclusively residential area, you want to address those problems before something goes in there that's gonna impact the whole neighborhood. And if you look at the use chart, and if anyone wants to see it, I have a copy here. There's a lot of uses that are in the GC that I wouldn't consider as a neighbor that I'd want to have in my backyard. And this is a long strip that, that goes all around the, um, uh, Belgrade, uh, new subdivision that's just to the south of it. And, uh, it would, it'll be a, you know, some commercial develops in that area. It'll be definitely a negative, you know, towards that, that development.
Uh, council, does that, does that conclude your presentation? Or, uh, council, do you have any questions on the staff presentation of Mr. Swanky?
Just the location. Is this the, it looks like there was a business there at one time, like a rock business? Is that what, what this property?
It was, uh, the Fulton Sons Nursery. It'd been there for many years. You moved in about twenty, twenty, twenty-five years ago. So they've, they've been here a long time. They've been here a long time.
I'm sorry, if there was something stated, we did not hear it online.
You did not hear what online?
Um,
It was, it was, uh, Mr. Glenn Foltz was confirming the fact. I had estimated they'd been here about twenty-five years. Mr. Glenn Foltz just acknowledged that was correct.
Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Please go ahead.
And is this a functioning business now or is it just land sitting there? Okay, understood.
Uh, not, the public hearing's not yet. I'm just, do you have a question for staff? Is, that's what I'm asking the council. Do you have a question for staff?
I have no more questions.
All right, very good. There's no more questions for staff. And we're through with our presentation. We will go to the public hearing. I'd like to open up the public hearing on this item. I know we do have Mr. Foltz in the audience, owner of the property. And I have, uh, two requests to speak on this item. Um, so, Mr. Foltz, would you like to come? I'll give you, you're the owner. I give you your, uh, choice. You can go before or after these speakers.
My name's Glenn Foltz. I'm the owner of it. Been there for twenty-five to thirty years. We are a major and contributor factor to this town growing and giving things to people and helping out the development of this property. We're talking about taking away basically my mom and my retirement by de-zoning it and making it very less valuable to be sold to anything. And Mr. Halsey is talking about, and this gentleman over here, Mr., I can't wank, Wank, is talking about how it is detrimental to build businesses there and stuff. But I look across the street and I see a Dollar General store, I see a strip mall area, I see a big field that's been sold as commercial directly across the street from me. So I, I don't understand why, I understand we don't probably want certain types of organizations to go in in that area, but I really don't see where we're gonna have a problem having some sort of a restaurant, strip mall, an area that can be give to our communities, cause they have a place to go, because we're talking about where people to go, like you were talking about the traffic pattern. I don't really see thirty-five mile an hour as a good ordeal, but we don't really have to worry about thirty-five miles an hour, because between four and seven o'clock, I could walk home faster than I could drive home. And I really don't think by being a four lane road, it's gonna change a bit when it goes from a six lane road on outskirts to the four lane road. So I, I don't understand why we're trying to change the fact that I can't have businesses come in here and I can sell my property as a business. Now, don't want concrete stuff, we don't want that type of stuff in there, we want something nice, and we want something that people can go shop and do something at. Now, as my meeting to planning and development, when that was a vote of, I don't know if everybody knows here, that was an unanimous vote turning it down. Nobody wanted that, everybody went against that. So here's, I'll say something to you guys, is that you're gonna buy a six hundred and fifty to a million dollar house, and you're gonna put it right over next to the church. This isn't a normal church. This church is a business. This church operates seven days a week, probably fifteen hours a day. They are having events, they have baseball, they have football, they have stadium lights, they have two schools that are showing up from six in the morning till four o'clock. They have events all day long, there's lots of screaming, there's lots of yelling, there's lots of having a good time. It's all good. But I sure don't want a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar house with my backyard and my swimming pool, and I have to sit out there and listen to that. And I have a very good idea of that, because again, I live right behind a park. And it's nice, I'm glad the children all have a place to go to. But it is very much changed. My property is the way of it being quite, but it's not quite. The church is gonna be the same thing. So we're trying to take away my development, my zoning, and change it to just building houses in there. And then you're gonna have a bunch of houses in there, and they're gonna start complaining, complaining about these church and all these people. It doesn't stop over there. It, it just doesn't. So across the street, now, again, planning and development is kinda in control, and then I guess you guys are the finalizer of it, so I don't see why you can't sell the property and put nice businesses in there for people to go do something, a place to go eat besides a place to go get tattooed, go get drunk, go get high, all this is right across the street, it's beautiful, with their Mexican looking lights, these stuff all flashed up. So I do believe that we can improve by putting some nice businesses in it. In the back half of it, it could be sold as residential, to have some house. But me personally, I don't even understand the reality of anybody wanting a house.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Do you know the difference between general commercial and neighborhood commercial?
Uh, I would say a concrete plant, a vet office, uh, heavier industrial versus a, uh, uh, Walgreens.
Neighborhood commercial is much more restricted, it's still commercial, but more restricted than general.
But you're wanting to change the whole problem.
No, I understand that. I'm just asking you, I'm asking you a question, I'm just asking you a question.
I'm not as smart as you are in all the wordage, as far as the wordage, but yeah, I kinda got an idea of what that means, because I drive around a lot, and unlike you, I delivered dirt to all these people out in here for years and years and years, and I watched these developments grow, and then they built different businesses within their, their area. So I kinda got an idea of what that is.
Sure.
But.
I can't tell you the full list of what's in either category.
Right, and, and I can tell you the full list, because my, my mom right over here has the full list of what we were, what GE really was from the very original part. We, we have these papers, and there's a lot of it on there. I'm one hundred percent in agreeance with you. It's not a place for, but a bunch of more houses? I don't understand that part. I think we're building enough houses to raise the tax revenue. I think we need a few more businesses in town and you, you more stuff, and that's really will be a very nice spot, especially when the road expands and gets bigger, people can go right in there, people can come across the street, people can come from this side. So I believe it's detrimental to the city to just build a bunch more houses so that from three o'clock on, we can sit on the side of the road to wait to get home. Cause it takes me from my business to my house during five forty minutes from about four o'clock on. It's crazy. All right. Yes, that's all I had to say.
Thank you, Mr. Foltz.
We're gonna make it, sir, thank you.
Uh, next speaker is Ms. Marsha Rollins.
Mayor and counsel, I'm Marsha Rollison, I reside at two twelve Bain Road. I am asking the council to vote against rezoning the property from commercial to residential. It is my opinion that commercial is not incompatible with the church, nor is it incompatible with subdivision. There's a daycare center just north of, or south of subdivision. Commercial and retail is directly across the highway. So I don't feel that this small commercial area is incompatible. Um, the city will have some control over what type of businesses do come in. It, somebody can't just come in and do whatever they want. And plus, this is against the, the property owners' wishes. They did not request this change. P and Z also voted unanimously against the change, which I think that should hold a lot of weight. In my opinion, it is overreach on the part of the city, and therefore I respectfully request the council vote against the change. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rollison. Ms. Patricia Hillborn.
Thank you, I'm Patricia Hillborn, twenty-two oh seven Virginia Lane. It's gonna sound repetitive. Uh, however, I think the more times the, you hear this, then maybe I'll be preaching to the choir by the end of my little speech. This item, item eight D, forces a zoning change on the Foltz family, who are a longtime Hasslet property owners and residents. Should be denied. It was initiated by the city of Hasslet, thank you mayor for taking responsibility, not by the property owners. The property owners are adamantly opposed to the zoning change. They own prime, commercial, real estate, fronting a state highway, and they want the current zoning of, of general commercial to remain in place, and that's what the city should do. This request stinks of down zoning. It leads to lowering the property values of the real, actual financial detriment of the property owners. It affects them directly. The change will potentially bring more residential units to Hasslet with an entrance onto State Highway one fifty-six. Let's not forget, it's a state highway. How would that be an improvement over the current zoning regarding traffic or safety? And lastly, the executive summary that's included in the packet states that the general commercial designation is incompatible with property uses on the north and south of the property, a church and a residential development. And, uh, Ms. Rollison addressed that really, really very well, thank you, Marsha. The Foltzes have been here longer than either of those things that have come into this city. And there is other commercial property along State Highway one fifty-six, including directly across the road from the church, a restaurant with a bar. That has not stopped the church from thriving and succeeding at its many goals to, uh, bring whatever it brings to the city, including, as Mr. Foltz mentioned, a school and activities seven days a week. How is that incompatible with commercial? It's not. So this forced zoning change, I believe, does not demonstrate who Hasslet is, what Hasslet is, or how we treat our property owners and our fellow residents. I ask you to unanimously declare this request as unacceptable for our city and deny it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hillborn. Is anybody else like to speak on this topic? Mr. Ritchie?
Pat Ritchie, four oh four Blue Mountain Road. I was at the, uh, planning zoning meeting also, and, uh, the vote was unanimous to not approve this zoning change. And, um, one of the members actually gave the current administration a pretty good tongue lashing for bringing it forward. I'm a little confused why it's here. I mean, why would the city even take it up after that? But, okay, uh, go ahead and vote on it. But be careful, because the city or the people, the council is the people, that originally that was all commercial property, all the way down there to the, what, the Knoxes or the Hickses' house there, all the way down, okay? We're the ones, the council's the ones that selectively changed this for residential in this strip for a church, okay? It wasn't, it wasn't these folks, okay? They've done exactly what we planned for years ago. We didn't follow our plan, so now we've created our own mess. It's not their fault, okay? So we need to fix the mess, and you do it by zoning and by putting in the right kind of stuff in that commercial prop, and let them, you know, like, like everybody said, y'all know, y'all've heard it all. They're good people and they deserve everything they can get out of that prop. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ritchie. Does anybody else would like to speak to this topic?
Big Button? There we go. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, counsel. Uh, my name is Luke McCollum, I'm a broker that represents the Foltz family. And while I'm not a, a resident of Hasslet, I'm a resident of a adjoining, uh, municipality, and I spend a lot of time on the roads here and live my life here pretty close. So, uh, I'm, I'm tied to this issue, I guess, in a number of ways. Uh, and you know, I, I guess, being to the, uh, having attended this meeting and having attended the, uh, P and Z meeting of a month ago, uh, you know, one thing is clear, and that's that, you know, everybody speaking here on both sides, uh, the mayor, the council members, uh, everybody has, is uniform in one thing, and that's, uh, achieving a good quality of life for the citizens, citizens of Hasslet. And it's, it's clear that everybody's genuine in their desire to make that happen. Uh, but with that being the case, when I consider, you know, what's being proposed here, it's a little bit of a head scratcher, uh, when on one hand you begin the meeting by, uh, identifying the clear concern that roads are just severely congested, right? And no one enjoys that, it's not good for quality of life. But on the other hand, when you consider, uh, what's being proposed here, uh, we're talking about adding rooftops right in the very middle of where all this congestion is, which just, without a doubt, just puts more cars on the road. Uh, on top of that, you're talking about, uh, removing an opportunity for amenities and services, uh, for the citizens that live here. So when we had the planning and zoning, uh, meeting a month ago, a, a number of residents stood up and said, you know, I have to drive, uh, so many things that I need in my life, for banking, for restaurants, for food. I have to get in my car and drive and sit in traffic, and they're just sitting in their cars for much more and much longer than they should ha- have to do. So the idea of, again, of adding rooftops right in the very center of an area that we're concerned is congested, and on top of that, just asking or removing an opportunity for people to, uh, stay close, to go, uh, to take care of the things that they need, to have amenities, to purchase things, uh, just seems to fly in the face of what we're trying to achieve for, uh, the residents of, of Hasslet. So I, I think that's the first issue. Uh, and the second issue has also been well, uh, attended and spoken for, and that's just a basic principle of how your city government operates. Uh, you know, if you're, if you're a citizen at home, you have to be watching this and thinking about it. And just the idea that the, you know, the, uh, the resident and the owner is not the one who initiated this change. So you might think, well, that's not that such, that such a big deal, but I mean, when you consider the fact that that could happen to you, like wherever you are, whatever your business is, whatever your home is, uh, that has to be a little bit alarming. So I'm not saying that the city shouldn't do that, right? I mean, it's, it's wise for the city to look far down the road, right? Far down the road and have a plan, uh, like for future use. What are we gonna do in the future, right? And what are we gonna do with these large areas of land? Uh, but it really has to concern you as a citizen when you consider the fact that in a very short amount of time, uh, the city, uh, has pointed at one specific piece of property and said, this piece of property right away should be changed to the detriment of this owner. So I think that's something that the council needs to, uh, consider, uh, whether they wanna endorse. And I think the citizens are clearly watching. Uh, it's been mentioned before that the, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, unanimously spoke against this and, and, and made a recommendation against this. And it's clear that there's, uh, just overwhelming public opposition to this. So, uh, on behalf of the Foltz family, and on behalf of just people in this community, and I'm, I live close by, it's just clear that, uh, the ask is for a unanimous likewise to what Planning and Zoning, uh, voted, for the council to unanimously vote, uh, against what's being proposed here with this zoning change. Thank you.
So that was very good, that was very good. And, uh, I wanted to make one comment to that. You know, as, uh, in the position that any mayor is in any city, you know, they see things, and it's their job to bring those up. Now, maybe some understand, well, that won't be popular, and they make a decision not to bring it up, but it has to be addressed. I'm, um, not hesitant to bring up an unpopular item. Now, there's a reason why we got a Planning and Zoning Commission, and we got a city council. They consider those items, they get flushed out, the community gets to hear. And they have to consider on behalf of the community which way to go. Whereas likewise on this one, P and C goes, no, we're not gonna do that. So they voted against it. There's a reason like on both of these, city council here, there's five members. It's the wisdom of those five members who will prevail. So when a single, um, however an ordinance hits the agenda, it's not government overreach. It is a, in fact, zoning is one of the clear staples of the rights of the cities, according to state statute, whether an owner is asked or not. And now, do I encourage that? No, that, and that's not to be doing it willy nilly, but again, you know, I'm revealing this. I look at all the different properties, there are some things that haven't been done that should have been done years ago, and many people on P and C will tell you that, Steph will tell you that, and other things. And I saw this for one reason, I'm not defending, you know, me putting it on there. Uh, but there's a reason why we have planning and zoning and five members on there to make a vote. There's a reason when you got five members on this council to make a vote as well. That's how this process works. Anyway, that was, uh, is there anybody else that'd like to speak on this public issue, on this issue, public hearing? Is somebody on the, um, tele, uh, teleconference? Okay, I see none in the audience, not on the teleconference. Uh, I will close the public hearing. Discussion, counsel.
Uh, I've already explained why it was put on, uh, if there's no discussion.
I've got a question, do we have a list of the, the general commercial uses for this property?
Um, yes, we do. I'll, I'll pass this around, you're looking, I, actually, when you, uh, look at, there is a, a column, cause there's no heading on the top of them, it's the one that highlighted all. column, because there's no heading on the top of them. It's the one that highlighted all the way down.
Is that enough copies per e-
That's, that's just one copy. It's just multiple.
And I'll, um, I'll kind of add on to that, but there are certain restrictions within a certain, um, mileage to a church, correct? Certain things that can't go in.
Yes.
And as well as the elite, hazard elite pool on the north side of Belgrade. I'll, I'll let you look at it first since you requested.
Yeah. Yeah. One of the things that, uh, actually came out in the, in the public hearing is that the owner of, of the property is not the user of the property eventually. And, um, an investor can purchase the property and any of the uses that are identified in that, that chart uh, can go there. And so in a lot of ways, that's a scary proposition. You know, you can stand up here and say, I want to do a restaurant, which would be nice, but there's some things that are in that list that are not so nice. Indoor firing of, of guns, you know, that's all, that's on the list. You can have an indoor gun range. Not, not necessarily what you really want in your backyard. Um, but there are, there's, there's just a lot of things in that list that are in the general commercial.
That, that was my question. Does the city council not have to approve any new businesses coming into the city?
That list are given by right.
I'm sorry, if there's-
If someone's speaking, could you speak to the mic?
Yeah, well, I am. I didn't have it turned on. Sorry about that. Councilmember Ricketts has the floor right now. Councilmember Ricketts, please.
I was just saying, there's someone speaking. We did not hear any of that conversation.
It was a little free for all. I just had to calm it down a little bit.
My question is, does the city not approve any new businesses coming into this, this area? Is, is that correct? Or can they just put up whatever's on the list?
Whatever's on the list are uses that are allowed by right. But they, you will see it in a, in the form of a site plan when somebody does an overall development. You'll see a site plan for buildings, but not necessarily the use. But the uses, you've, basically that ordinance approves those uses that are identified.
While, while he's looking at that, I'll, I'll make, um, some comments. Um, I, I do know that the Foltz and Sons Nursery has been there since nineteen ninety seven and the church came in two thousand and six, Belgrade, twenty twenty one. So to, to have them changed due to what came in after them, I don't feel is appropriate. And it does, it is a little scary that if this could happen to an individual that didn't request it, what could it happen to another citizen? So I know there is commercial property west of one fifty six. We have, you know, the Hazard Elite, the Sonic, the Terry Grill, the Dennis, the Sedanis, the Jim, the Food Store. So I know we have a lot of commercial over there. And I'm on the other side with the commercial on the, uh, the east side. So it is a little scary, this precedent of, of changing it in regards to a, an individual or a property owner not requesting it and more houses, which is more traffic. So those are my thoughts.
Yes, sir. You have a question, Mr. Foltz?
I, I would call on Councilmember Rickett. Was there a, did you want to address the council? Excuse me. I'll, I'll direct that. Mr. Foltz, if you want to come up to the mic.
I, I would just like to say, I'm hearing him say gun range.
Excuse me. First off, the-
Glenn Foltz, twelve oh four Highway one fifty six Foltz and Son. Uh, I, I'd just like to address, I'm hearing gun. Okay. That's never going to happen. We've had all kinds of people come and want to buy our piece of property over the last four years, I believe, that we've been listing it and come right down here to the state of council and it gets shut right down at the front. That they get told they are not going to be able to do this, or not going to be able to do this from bed offices to container yards to, uh, storage buildings. Uh, we had one people from Colorado who wanted to use the back part, build a big twelve foot fence all the way around it in the back and, and run basically a construction yard in the back and make the front part your office and stuff to park in. So I, I, I'm hearing this belonging gun range. Is, uh, let's talk about what's reality going to go into our place. It's not going to be a gun range. It's not going to be a concrete plant. It, you know, you don't want a gas station next to your house. I don't even see a problem having a gas station next to the house up on those corners. I think that's a good idea to put a roundabout right there and some gas stations in there and build a big old wall. And everybody's safe. Everybody's got a place to get gas, stop, get some food. It's everywhere else. It's in Wataga, it's in Keller, it's in Saginaw, it's in Rowan Oak. It's, it's everywhere, sir.
Well, good. You got a lot of choices to go to now.
Yeah, but I gotta drive, don't I? How long does it take me to get to? Just to, down to the lights. It's my opinion.
Mr. America, I have a question just to clarify.
You need to identify yourself in your residency, where you live.
Uh, Luke McCallum, I'm a, a citizen of Justin and adjoining municipality. Uh, my question is, just as a matter of clarification, um, and, and you mentioned that there are, uh, recommended uses or, or allowed uses, I guess, on the chart that's, uh, set forth in the city ordinance for a general commercial. Uh, but just because it's identified as, as a use doesn't automatically mean that it's, uh, going to be approved. Is that not correct? Aren't there, aren't there, uh, I guess, stages in place, protections in place that allow the purview of the planning and zoning and a vote by city council and so forth to vet and go through plans? I, i- it, it sounds like it's being presented as if it's on the list, it will just automatically go through.
That is correct. So Morse, excuse me, sir. You asked a question. Okay, Morse, you want to answer?
The answer to the question, the zoning ordinance sets out series of uses for each category. When somebody builds a commercial building, they don't identify what the uses are. When they come in to get a, a CO or a, or an occupancy permit, then they'll tell the building inspector what uses is going to go in there, but it's, it's past this board. This board doesn't decide, say, well, okay, there's a, we don't want a tattoo shop there, which is allowed in, in that, in the, but they don't see that request. The request is going to come to the city, and if it's allowed in the chart, allowed for that, that place there, then it would be approved.
So, but my question is, are there not protections in place? I mean, other, other than just saying, uh, we absolutely will approve this. I mean, there are other measures you can take. Uh, there's, there's the site plans or all kinds of things that-
Excuse me, sir. So
Sure.
You probably have not done this before. So if you buy a piece of property, it's general commercial out there. Say you buy Mr. Foltz's property and you decide you want to build a little shopping center there on the front end. And you're going to have different, uh, so it's general commercial. That's how it's zoned right now. This over here has a list of general commercial. And if it's got a P by that down the, uh, in that chart, you don't, there is no further check. It's allowed. You don't have to ask anybody. In fact, you won't be asking anybody. You'll just put it in. There is no, there is no other stock gap, is what I'm saying. This is the stock gap. So maybe, uh, so once you buy that general commercial, you can build anything that's in, and put any business in that's on that list.
So i- it would seem to me, though, that the process of going to P and Z and the process of going for council, site plans and such would be a preventative measure and a protective measure as far, as part of the process.
No, zoning is the protective measure.
Sure. But it has to be approved by the city. It's not, for, for example, building permits, uh, business permits, these kind of things.
If it's allowed in the ordinance, there's no basis for denial.
Well, it seemed to me this would be an issue of having a, uh, a zoning, uh, type designation that's just absolutely entirely too broad.
So yet maybe a different zoning would be in, in, in order then.
Certainly not residential because the community and the P and Z have clearly, uh, and outstandingly recommended against-
So maybe what you're saying is neighborhood commercial is, which is more, it's still commercial, but it's more restricted. It's not as broad as general commercial.
That's not, that's not what's at issue at, at, at the, at the table at this point. I'm just saying, I'm, I'm, I'm saying general commercial is clearly too broad.
Okay, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Glenn Foltz, twelve oh four Highway one fifty six Foltz and Son. Got one question for you then. What you just stated to me, what, what I just heard, what you just stated, then, then that at the point that I am right now, I'm a general commercial, I can just go ahead and open up any business I want.
That's on that list, man. That's on that list.
Right now. I don't have to come, okay, but I don't have to come ask you.
That's correct.
I can just start my business back up and roll right now. You're, you, that you guys can't do nothing about it.
Just, just a little clarification. Before you start that business, you have to do a site plan, how the land is going to develop, how the buildings are going to be constructed and, and the layout of the buildings, not the use, not the use.
Building's already there.
If, if, if it's, if it meets code and it falls in that list and meets all the parking.
But, but what you're telling me, so I can, all I have to do is my building passes and I can put a gun range in, right? You just, is that what you're telling me?
If, Mr. Foltz, if it's on the list.
He said a gun range was on G- was general. I'm, I'm asking that question.
Yeah.
Indoor.
Okay.
Indoor gun range is on the list.
Okay. So there's no check to. Is that, that's not what I'm really understanding here. See, see, I can already tell that you will fight, no matter what goes in there, gun range, tattoo shops, strip bar, whatever, you are going to fight it if it doesn't do good for our city. There's no doubt about that. I, there, maybe there's no direct checks, but everybody just has to complain up here a little bit and other people like these gentlemen here. And it can just make it to the point that nobody can build what they want to just build and put in there.
If it's, if it's on this list, according to the zoning, whether it's industrial, general commercial, neighborhood commercial. Now, uh, what you've described in the past, that evidently previous, uh, proposals had been for the purpose of your, purchase of your property for was denied because it's not on the general commercial list. It was on the industrial list. You're not zoned for industrial. You're zoned for general commercial. What can go in industrial doesn't, doesn't mean it can go in general commercial.
I, I have the list.
I understand you have a list, but it's got to be on the general commercial list, not the, the list that existed twenty years ago. It's the list that exists today.
So the rule, the rules from twenty years ago of what you zoned me in at, you weren't involved in. People left. Don't apply to me no more. Correct?
They would not apply today when someone buys your property and wants to build a business on it.
Right, right. So at that point, when someone buys my property, at that point, you guys can go ahead and say, you're not allowed to build this because you're already doing that. You're, you're not allowed to build this. You're not allowed to do this. So you can stop in your gun range. You can stop a lot of that stuff because they're going to have to expose, just like third, twenty something years ago, I stood in front of the county and told them what I wanted to do and had to draw up a plan and had to explain to them what I was going to build on the property and what we were going to do on the property.
Mm-hmm.
What's going to stop that from being to the next person that buys the piece of property to build restaurants and build stuff like that? Not a gun range, not a strip bar, not a tattoo bar, small strip mall, some different shops in it. And do we not have regulations against the different, what we can have inside a a mall areas or inside our town?
Yes, absolutely. But what I'm, I, I am saying is if it's on this ordinance, in this ordinance, and it's a list, uh, where Fortem Marl has it right now. There's a list of businesses and there's different columns. And, and for all that says a P under general commercial, it has a P. If it has a P, you can put that kind of business in. No questions asked.
I, I have no more to say, but I, I, I real, I really do. Oh. How you got voted in and what, what you're doing, we'll come back.
That, I, I'm sure it will.
Okay.
Mr. Foltz, I have a question. I- is your property up for sale, currently up for sale?
My name's Glenn Foltz, twelve oh four Highway one fifty six Foltz and Son. The property is currently for sale and has been brought up on contract three times in the, in just the last year and a half. Different people have, have, have came in, looked at it. Some people want to do the housing in the back and the restaurants and stuff in the front. Some people want to build gas stations. Some people are like what he said. They want to just grab a hold of it. Investment ordeal, wait for the highway to blow up and put stuff in. You know, and eventually, if it sits there, someone with enough money will come in here and build something like they want to, and you'll shove it down your throat. Because of why? Because what you just said, they can.
Well, it won't be shoving down my throat.
Oh, yeah, they will because they can because of the general, because of the general ordeal, what you're saying. But you have the, you, you have the control to, to change that. So yes, the property is for sale. Have people come and look at it tomorrow. Again.
One, one last question. Do, do you know the difference of the value if it was residential versus for commercial?
Probably, uh, uh, fifty to a hundred, but I think you told me seventy-five to fifty. So approximately twenty-five thousand to fifty thousand an acre.
Can you clarify that? And you mean it would go from fifty if it was commercial to twenty-five if it was residential? Can you clarify what you mean when you said twenty-five?
Fifty thousand for basically like one hundred thousand, I mean, fifty thousand for residential, a hundred.
Hundred thousand.
Commercial, but you know.
And also this land, if you'll, which isn't being brought up, the back part of our property does not belong to the city. It's in the county. Another reason he would like to go ahead and take it from us is because at that point, I have, I, I can do whatever I want to do on the back piece of my property if I want to.
Well, I'll tell you, I would like to say this.
About that. So I'm, I'm speaking right now, sir.
Uh, but you're making a characterization, and that's fine. You can make that characterization.
Yeah.
You know it's not true.
Oh, no, I know it's true. And a lot of people in this town know that's true. But yes, so you're, you're trying to get the back piece of property and everything. I'm trying to do something, sell the piece of property. I'd like to sell the piece of property to a commercial development that would put stuff nice in it and do what's right for the piece of property. That's what we would hope for for the property, not to be a bunch of houses, devalue what we worked for a lot of years.
So result, so being, I think the market value high end of it is around fifty thousand dollars an acre right now. So you're saying anywhere from a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars an acre is the potential for that piece of property?
I'm sorry, we can't hear you online, whoever's speaking.
You need to come up, yeah.
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Luke McCallum, uh, real estate broker who's, uh, just familiar with this deal. And I just want to speak real quickly on how this affects the property value. Um, yeah, Mr. Mayor, residential I would characterize as uh, probably being worth the sixty thousand dollars an acre. And, uh, commercial, uh, you know, three, possibly four times, uh, that value. Two hundred thousand dollar range, maybe more.
For that, for that property there?
Yes, sir.
So, wow. Wow. You can get two hundred thousand dollars an acre. I don't blame- So, wow, wow. You can get 200,000 dollars an acre. I don't blame you, Glenn. Bite tooth and nail.
I had a question for Mr. Swanky, the P with the asterisk by the P. Can you explain that?
Yes, the asterisk, I mean, there's additional standard.
And, oh, okay. Yeah, thank you. Um, I did want to clarify is that the, the, it's listed at 13.4. You actually have about 18 something acres out there. And on the, on the item here is, uh, 13.4. And that reason it's 13.4, that's what's in the city limits. We're not addressing what's in the county. Anyway, nonetheless, so we have the, uh, we've had our public hearings, been a good discussion. Uh, we are, we're in the middle of discussion right now. Is any more discussion?
Uh, I just wanted to point out that if you look at that chart, you'll notice that, uh, uh, religious uses, there's a P, horizontal P across all zoning districts. That's because in Texas, if you want to build a church or, uh, religious, uh, anything, uh, you can do it in any zoning district. And you, the city has no way to stop that other than in building regulations, building codes. But the uses, you can, that's what we're talking about here, use, not building. But that's why the church is there because originally that was commercial too. Uh, I think it was general commercial, just like all of Siree was. And the church came in there and, you know, it's like, okay, as long as you, you know, ma- meet the code, you know, we, we really have, it's yours by right. So, uh, that's why the church got there. Uh, the people that built, uh, the residential area, or building the residential area to the south were aware that the property to the north was general commercial, must have been okay with them. I mean, they could see the for sale sign out there just as well as anybody passing by. So it must be okay, uh, with that. And there, and there at least, well, the, any of the uses and the general commercial that have a P, P is for permitted. So any of those are permitted. So as Mr. Swanky says, those are permitted by right. The city cannot, as already said, we agree that the, that a purchaser can use that property for these use. I mean, that's already been decided. So for somebody to tell you no, uh, that's just wrong. Uh, but now somebody can, um, the city has say over what the structure looks like and how it's built, and the building codes and that kind of thing. But the uses, it's already been decided. So there's no argument. Uh, so I just wanted to make that clarification.
Is there any further discussion on this item?
Yeah, I just, I just want to recap right quick. Um, as much as I don't like the long list of things that can go in this property, I also don't like that this devalues the family's property. Mr. Fels made a very good point. So in my mind, I put myself in your shoes. If that happened to me, I would not like it. So unless a city is going to compensate you for the difference and, and I'm, I'm against this.
Do you want to make a motion? Why don't you make a motion to that? Just deny, deny the change.
I, I'm just going to make a motion to put this up for votes, uh, up for a vote as presented.
Mr. Mayor, I, I would suggest clarification on which way that motion was, was it a move for approval of the proposed zoning change or was it a move for denial of the?
I understand, uh, uh, why, why I would recommend, let me recommend something to you is that you make a motion to deny the zoning change. Yes.
Mayor Holsey?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to put this proposal up for, for a vote and recommend that we vote against it.
I'll second for denial.
Excuse me?
I make a motion to vote down the, the proven zoning classification of approximately 13.4 acres parcel of property known as 1204 FM 156 South from G C, general commercial to R two, R two residential suburban density two.
Okay, your motion is to vote it down, so meaning that you, uh, your, your motion is to deny the, uh, um, zoning change from commercial to residential R two.
Correct.
Okay, I'll second that denial.
Okay, so the motion and seconded is to deny the zoning change from general commercial to R two. Any further discussion?
I just have one last bit of discussion, if I may, just Councilmember Ricketts.
Yes.
Are we can, are we can, you know, I hear that we're looking at everything on the general commercial on that list. Are we looking at the wrong thing here? Should we be looking at that general commercial list and what the city has already approved in their ordinance as a, as a P? As permitted? Um, should, should we be looking at that versus the?
Uh, Councilmember Ricketts, they have been looking at that.
They have been looking at that?
Yes.
And, um, so we should expect something in the future of seeing what these, because again, Councilmember Clark and myself have not, can't even see what this list is. So we, you know, we're sitting here in the background, not even knowing what's going on with this list. So again, if.
Okay, just give me just one second, please.
My, my concern is I think we're looking at this differently, and we should be looking at the list and seeing what's permitted and what's not permitted, and the council will be looking at those items. But that's just, again, that's just further discussion. I, I hereby with a.
I'm going to read some off for you, okay?
Wait, can I just, um, I just have one comment.
I don't think you need to read anything off to me, Mayor Holsey. You need, we need to be looking at that list. If someone is looking at that list to say, do we need to be making changes to that list as a city?
Okay, timeout. Uh, that's a different topic, Councilman Ricketts.
That's, that's exactly what I was bringing up. We're looking at the wrong topic.
But if you would like to, um, make a, a motion to request that this be tabled to another time, you can do that. Otherwise, I think it might be most expedient that you go, we have a motion and a second on the floor, and then we just go ahead and call for the vote. It could be if you, if it fails, the most, I mean, if the motion succeeds to deny this zoning change, then there's nothing else to discuss on this item.
I'm looking at bringing it up as a topic, as a topic at the end of the meeting that we need to look at this list at the end of this meeting.
Oh, very good. Uh, can I go ahead and, uh, call for the vote? I'll do that. I'll call for the vote.
I thought Ms. Clark had wanted to add, add a discussion.
Who's that? Ms. Who?
Um, that was me, Councilmember Clark. I, I was just, I was just confirming what I believe Councilmember Ricketts was stating, and I understand what he is stating now. Um, and just because this has been very confusing, um, I just want to make sure I understood this correctly. The motion and the second right now is to deny changing the zoning on this property, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll call for the vote. Roll call vote. Again, to repeat, the motion is to deny the zoning change from commercial, general commercial to residential R two. So, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Marl.
Aye.
Councilmember Nahara.
Aye.
Councilmember Rob.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Ricketts.
Aye.
Motion is designed, this has failed. Congratulations. But again, I want to write, this is, this, excuse me, this is what this process, governmental process is about.
I'm sorry.
Once again, we, we can't hear.
It's, uh, Mr. Foltz. He's out in the audience.
I, my name is Glenn Foltz, 1204 Highway 156. I, I do agree with the one gentleman that, and I do agree with, with you very much, that I do believe that you should have more control over what to be built. Because I have no idea what he said and what you were stating, that I can go in there and just build a building. And because it's general, I can just put a gun range in. Because I built my building, so now I can do that. I don't believe that people should be able to do that. I really thought that you had more control over when it was general business, that what business, if they build a building there, what businesses could be put into that. So I do believe that should be addressed in that. And then that would solve exactly what I think you're kind of fighting about with me and with the gas station and would help government. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foltz. All right, very good. That was pretty good conversation. Item, you know, it's just. All right. That was eight D. We're on eight E. All right. This might be a little easier. Okay, I E. Discuss, consider, and act regarding canceling the Monday, January 3rd, 2022 regular meeting. Again, council, I put that on there. Uh, reason being is, you know, for about two weeks prior to January 3rd, we're going to have skeleton crews, staff and things. And, and, um, people taking off for Christmas and things of that nature. Um, the other, I checked with both engineering and with planning. Uh, and they're the real drivers on the statute-driven time or calendar items, which are plaques and funery plaques, final, and final plaques. And there, this poses no issue. It's canceling this meeting and, uh, having, uh, one meeting in January, on January 17th, which would be the normal calendar council meeting. That would, uh, so that's what's being proposed, cancel January 3rd, because it'd be very difficult to get a council agenda together for that meeting.
If we adopt the proposed meeting, uh, schedule for, uh, next year that was in the earlier item that we skipped over, that would make this one moot, right? Because there is only one meeting proposed on that list.
Yeah, that would go ahead. And the reason I asked for this is because I'm, I, I'm asking you to take care of this item separately. Here's the reason why. Because you passed a previous calendar, uh, the 2021 calendar happened to include January 3rd of 2022. And when this year's calendar was being made out, I noticed it had the, um, January 2023 date on there. And I said, remove that. Let's set the calendar for 2022. And also in the new calendar that we will, will be addressing as well, only have one meeting in January, in the middle of the month for this same issue. Because two weeks, you know, for about 10 days, two weeks to 10 days, people will be gone. And it's very difficult to put an agenda and all the work that goes into it.
I mean, 2023, there'd be one, this would be something if we approved, that would be a standard.
Calendar, yeah, we, you'll notice it doesn't have.
It's off to December, right?
We stop in December.
But are you saying that this would be the norm, that it would just be one meeting in January moving forward?
Correct.
I, I am not, this, y'all are going to think I'm crazy. I'm not like, let's just meet all the time. But I do, I am concerned with all of our infrastructure projects going on, our, our development projects going on. We've already had two months where we only met one. Um, so I don't want to meet just to meet, but, um, I, I remember a lot of committees personally. And so a lot of times when you skip a meeting, it's just a really long one for, for the one month we have. So, you know, that, that's just my opinion. I, I am not opposed keeping January 3rd, but if everybody is like, no, then I'll understand that. So I would personally like to continue to meet on the 3rd, but that's just my opinion. Like I said, I, I'm an over meter, I guess, because I, I love seeing y'all so much.
This is Councilmember Ricketts. Just question to you, to Mayor Pro Tim Marl. Um, wouldn't we, if we had to have a meeting because of planning or something coming up, couldn't we call, um, couldn't we call a special session if we knew that we had the statutes coming on?
That's true.
Excuse me, hold on. Is, I think he's supposed to be addressing the chair.
I'm sorry.
Is, but you addressed, you know, I, I need to call y'all back to the Roberts rules. Anyway, nonetheless, the, this part for is that I, I say, I checked with engineering, I checked with planning. We have nothing coming up on the calendar that we would need to address for those timetables to have that first meeting in January.
So, uh, there's one point that I'd like to make. If, should we cancel this meeting and anything come up? And we have to then schedule a special meeting, we are then required to have at least four council members present for a quorum. Versus if we leave this meeting on the agenda or on the calendar and then get close to the time for that meeting. So come up, come, coming up to January 3rd, realize, okay, we don't have anything for an agenda, then we can cancel the meeting at that time. Just.
It doesn't work that easy. Either the staff works towards an open meeting, the meeting's scheduled and puts items on it, or they don't. And right now, I, I'd asked the staff, uh, is there anything out there that would suffer or cause a problem if we went to January 17th? Now, in general, or in fact, unanimously, the staff is in favor of it. They're the ones that have to do the work and put it together. Now, if they know this, that it's coming that way, they can plan all these cementals that are given to us. Um, I think the heavy lifting, a lot of this stuff, is we're getting past that and, uh, of what's left out there to do. So personally, I mean, I work this thing day, every day, all day long, and I don't see any issue with it. So I think to simplify things, let's address this January 3rd, 2022. Then we can go back to the calendar, which is a different topic.
Right, I think, uh, Councilmember Clark had a good, a good point, that if something did come up that was, it involved our immediate attention, a special meeting would require four. So I'd be in favor of keeping it on. And then like, with, like with P and Z, if there's nothing new or pressing, they'll cancel the meetings. That's, I'm pretty sure that's what they did when, is that correct, Councilmember?
All right, would you, would you like to make that a motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion to keep the Monday, January 3rd meeting on the schedule.
Okay, so the motion is to, uh, keep the January 3rd meeting on the schedule. So is there a second?
I'll second.
There is a second. All right, I'll call for the vote. Mayor Pro Tim Marl.
Aye.
Uh, Councilmember Nahara.
Nay.
Councilmember Rob.
Nay.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Ricketts.
Nay.
Okay, uh, the motion failed. Uh, so by virtue of that, the, uh, meeting date, uh, is, uh, taken off the calendar. I'm sorry. What, what?
I was asking if we needed to, Ms. White, do we actually need to make a motion to take it off? Or is it good since he's corrected, failed?
Uh, does someone want to, okay, well, I, I, I want you to walk out confident we've done the right thing. So, uh, would someone make a motion to, uh, cancel the, the January 3rd, 2022, uh, meeting?
We might not have to. I was just asking the, um, Ms. White if we had to. I'm okay if we don't have to. But I was just asking the attorney what her opinion was. We don't have to, that's fine.
Well, you, you, well, and, and once, your, your motion was to, let's keep it. And that got voted down. Actually, I want to. Actually, I want a, a motion to cancel it.
Can Ms. White answer my question, please, Ms. White?
Sure, I, I think um. It's probably cleanest to go ahead and have the alternate motion, just so that the record is clear, what the council's desire is with respect to that meeting.
So if we could get an explicit motion to cancel the January third, twenty twenty two city council meeting.
Mayor Halsey.
Mayor Halsey.
I make a motion to cancel the January third, um, council meeting, regular meeting.
January third, twenty twenty two?
Correct.
Motion is made to cancel the January third, twenty twenty two city council meeting. Is there a second?
This is Councilmember Ricketts, I'll second.
There is a second. Have a real call vote. Mayor Pro Tem Morrow.
Aye.
Uh, Councilmember Nahara.
Aye.
Councilmember Robb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Ricketts.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, counsel. Okay, let's go back and consider the item that we had, uh, that was taken off the consent agenda. It is the uh, twenty twenty two calendar. Now, that calendar, if you look at it, it only has one meeting in January. Has one meeting in November, and one meeting in December. Now. It's coming up there. So we uh, our, our, our last motion there, we um, it gives us this January seventeenth. But what you're, you're approving here is the remainder of the city council. Calendar. And if, if you'll note, we only did twenty twenty two, so we don't get, you know, the following year, twenty twenty three, or December of uh, twenty twenty two. We're not addressing this issue here, where we're looking at another year, a month ahead.
Okay, this is Mayor Pro Tem Morrow. I make a motion to approve the city council meeting schedule, calendar year twenty twenty two, as submitted.
Uh, motion is made to approve the twenty twenty two city council meeting schedule. Is there a calendar year twenty twenty two? Is there a second?
This is uh, this Councilmember Robb, I'll second, but uh, a point of discussion.
Yes.
Uh, I think that we, and uh, for, when this time, uh. Next fall, when we make the twenty twenty three calendar, or whoever does that. Uh, it needs to be earlier, because the staff will need to know when the meeting in January is gonna occur. They can't just assume, and that's probably why the January meeting was put on the calendar, because. So I'm suggesting that it be made, this come up in, say, November, earlier, so. The staff would know, okay, there's the meeting on, the next meeting is gonna be on January seventeenth, whatever.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, this should be done early.
Ms. Montgomery, if you can make a note of that, that uh, future, in twenty twenty two, that we look at our uh, city council calendar?
Yes, sir, I already have it on my list.
Thank you very much. Do that in November, rather than December.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right, motion was made and seconded. Point of discussion. We ready for the vote? Any more discussion? All right, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Morrow.
Aye.
Councilmember Nahara.
Aye.
Councilmember Robb.
Aye.
Councilmember Clark.
Aye.
Councilmember Ricketts.
Aye.
All right, motion passes. The twenty twenty two calendar is adopted. Thank you. Item nine, executive session. The city council reserves the right to adjourn into executive session during the course of the meeting to seek legal advice from its attorney regarding any item on the posted agenda. Um, as authorized by section five five one point oh seven one of the Texas government code. Uh. Additionally, presented to the provision of chapter five five one of the Texas government code, city council may adjourn into executive session in accordance with the authority contained in section five five one oh seven one. Government code consultant consultations with attorney. Uh, section five five one oh seven two, government code deliberations about real property, section five five one oh seven four, government code personnel matters. Uh. At this time.
Before we adjourn, I'm sorry to interrupt, I'm gonna have to recuse myself on item nine A, the N I S D, and I still need a conflict of interest um, form to fill out. I haven't been, I haven't received one yet. Thank you.
Okay, um, Ms. Kara White. Would you get us a conflict of interest form, or Shannon, will you check that we have a conflict of interest form and put it in council, or Mayor Pro Tem Morrow's mailbox? Or email it, if we have it in digital form?
I can email it to her tomorrow.
Very good. Um. Noted. You'll be recusing yourself on the N I S D conversation. Very good. Um, so at this time, we'd like to uh, take a ten minute recess, so during the open session meeting, it is. Nine thirty seven P M, December thirteenth, twenty twenty one. And we will resume in ten minutes, please.
Make note I need to see you about six o'clock in the morning, okay?
No.
All right. We have Councilmember Ricketts and Councilmember Clark back on the open session. All right. Very good. Call or the open session resuming the open session. Call to your, the open session, resuming the open session of city council meeting December thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. It is eleven fifty P M. We are in open session and we have all council members, three in the chambers and two online. So if we would go back to our agenda, item ten is consider taking any action resulting from executive session.
Mayor Holsey?
Yes.
I move to approve the representation agreement for property.
Motion's made to approve the representation agreement for property as
I'll second.
And there's a second. Okay, I have a roll call vote, Mayor Protem Morrow.
Aye.
Councilmember Nahara?
Aye.
Councilmember Rob?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Ricketts?
Aye.
Thank you, council. With regard to personnel matters.
I can make a motion to approve the rate increases for employees listed on agenda as discussed in executive session.
The motion is made to apply, to approve the rate increases as discussed in the executive session for those listed on this agenda. Is there a second?
I'll second.
You want to let Carrie have one? Okay, Carrie, that's your second.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Very good. All right. A roll call vote, please. Mayor Protem Morrow?
Aye.
Councilmember Nahara?
Aye.
Councilmember Rob?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Ricketts?
Aye.
Thank you, council. Item eleven, future agenda items, do y'all have anything specific on, for you want on future agenda items?
I didn't have anything specific, Mayor Holsey, but this is go back to, I don't know if it'd go back to planning and zoning, but is this the place that we would say that I'd like to have someone take a look at what's on those different commercial versus neighborhood commercial versus that?
We're going to send you out that list tomorrow.
Okay, I appreciate it, thank you.
Each council person will send you that list that's in general commercial and I'll probably go ahead and get the remainder of it, you know, like industrial, non-commercial or, or what they call neighborhood commercial. And that'll give you a holistic look at what can happen in these zoning areas.
If we were to try to have someone wanted to revisit those lists to see if something that has a dash P maybe should just be on the list, but not a dash P, would that be a consideration of something down the road? Or would we have to take that back to planning and zoning and to bring it back to us, or how would that work?
No, we can, we can work, maybe we can get a, you know, workshop together on this thing and, and just iron this out, what would you like to see? Yes, it eventually needs to go through the, our government approval process and go into planning and zoning and they have public hearings and things of that nature to make those changes, then it comes to us. But there's nothing wrong with us working together on something or even, you know, it's several council people working on something and go here, but I want to submit this to P and C for their consideration and they can forward it up.
Yeah, I think something in between just the fully neighborhood and a commercial where you don't have, you exclude a lot of these things that we would not want to be in between a neighborhood and a church.
Morris Swanky seemed to be very knowledgeable of that, how to grade the general commercial, you know, in several two, three, four different categories. And would you like for him to look at that? I'll go ahead and, well, go ahead and send you the general commercial and neighborhood commercial and industrial list permitted uses. And so we go ahead and I'll go ahead and get Morris to start looking at the general commercial, just start with that one. And how would you break this up in grades? And, and send that out to y'all and we just, you know, send you that kind of information and
Would it be something we look at first and then possibly have a joint workshop with P and Z, or do we look at it first and then kind of give them our recommendations?
I, I think it's hard to get things done with the committee. It's real hard to get things done with victims. So I'd suggest we look at it as a council, you know, and here's what we think, we're giving them that guide, they would be, they, I'll tell you, they feel more comfortable than they would.
Yeah, usually goes better if you give, if you propose something to them and then say, tell us your opinion on this rather than invent something and then, because we've tried that in the past, that didn't work. So, and the same goes for the council, I'd, I'd like to see Mr. Swanky come up with a proposal and then we use that as the starting point.
Why do I do that? We'll send you the list as it is now. Get Mr. Swanky to take a pass at it, see how would you grade that and we bring it to, bring it to the council. Here's the starting point.
That'd be appreciated, thank you.
Good. I think with regard to future agenda items, I haven't got anything that I'm listing on here right now, but I'm going to start feeding, I say feed, I'm going to start sending out to you both here's things that are coming in, I haven't got the date nailed down yet, but here's the stuff. So that you're just not blind sighted. I just need you to be aware of the topics that we're all confronted.
And you were going to check on the Tarrant County Sheriff Prime Watch or the weekly reports I used to get?
Yes, it is. I got, yeah, I wrote that down. All right. Sounds like we are past the future agenda items, let's go to adjournment, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Mayor, I move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Ricketts, I heard that. Okay, all in favor? Aye.
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 Very good, I heard all majority aye.
Aye.
Motion for the, this city council meeting is adjourned at eleven fifty eight P M. December thirteenth, twenty twenty-one, Merry Christmas, everybody. Happy New Year. God bless.
Carrie, I hope everybody feels better at your place.
Thank you, going through the protocols.
I'm going to see you at six in the morning anyway, right?